Finance and Performance Policy Committee. My name is Zahira Nas and I'll be chairing today. The meeting today is open to the public. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode as not to disturb the conduct of this meeting? There is no fire test plan today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the turnhall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please note that Item 8, Part 2, is not available to the press and public because it contains exempt information described in Paragraph 3 of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. If members wish to discuss that information, we will need to ask members of the public and press to kindly leave before that part of the meeting and we will halt the webcast. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance, Performance, Policy Committee member introduce themselves and I'll start with you, councillor Lee.
Councillor Mary Lee, Donald Wood, and I'm substituting for El Dode today.
Councillor Garrett Slater, Southey Wood.
Councillor Martin Phipps, City Ward, Green Group's spokesperson for the committee.
Councillor Sir Fox, Mary Castle Lane.
Shabab Mohamed Ecclesall.
James Chapman, Mosborough.
Mike Leary, West Echelfield, Vice Chair.
Thank you and welcome. Apologies for absence, councillor El Dode, and apologies from Abdul Qiyun. Item 2, Exclusions of the Public and Press, though like I mentioned previously, Item 8, Part 2, is not available to the public and press because it contains exempt information described in Paragraph 3 of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972. Declarations of Interest, is there any declarations of interest? No? Okay, thank you. Item 4, Minutes of the Previous Meeting, this can be found in page 11 of the Agenda Pack. Can I ask, member, is there a true record? Yep, that's fine, unanimous, thank you very much. Item 5, Public Questions and Petitions, we have received no public petitions, questions or statements on this occasion. Item 6, Member Questions, there are no member questions for today's meeting. Item 7, Work Programme, this is on page 17 of the Agenda Pack and I'll ask Fiona if there's anything that you'd like to update us on.
There are a number of minor changes. There've been two items that were added for committee for today and there's been one item added for October's Policy Committee. There haven't been any amendments since we last met, but as always, the work programme is a live document and feedback and input from members is encouraged.
Councillor Fox.
Thanks Chair, and it's in relation to the government's announcement that they're going to remove the winter fuel payment and the effect of the report that they had done that there would be a possibility of 4,000 pensioners under threat. I just wondered whether we should be, as a finance committee, looking to make sure that we've got everything that this city requires and if the government does release the impact assessment, that we can respond to that, Chair. And I just wondered whether there is a way that we can have that on the committee available in case of. Thanks Chair.
Sorry Chair, I'm about to squeal. I think cost of living is being looked at by S and R, so I don't know whether it would fall within the remit of S and R, looking at that under the cost of living issues that it's doing.
We'll liaise with them and I'll get back to you. Thank you. Councillor Phipps.
Thanks Chair. Just a thought, so on the Finance Committee's climate commitments, it says there's a commitment to review the financial regulations with a view to climate impacts annually and we were just wondering, will an item relating to that be put on the work plan for the future? Or could it be?
I'm trying to remember, Chair, whether we've signed those off already.
I thought we did.
Yeah.
We'll be bringing back the finance regs at some point later in the year anyway, so we'll make sure that that's all wrapped up as part of the process.
I think each of the committees had a paper, ours probably wasn't the largest, but I remember a discussion at S and R and then each of the committees would have, because S and R had a climate one as well. Can't remember when though, Chair.
Yeah, we did have one here at Finance, but it will be coming back here later on anyway, won't it? So, yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Item 8. Okay, so the report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed this is for the work programme? Yeah, that's unanimous, that's agreed, thank you. Item number 8, which is a lease of land at Millhouses Park, and that's on page 25 on the Agenda Pack. So this is the one that's now open to press and public. So if there are any questions, we'll have to halt the webcast. Thank you.
Angela Glentworth, I'm interim Chief Property Officer. This is Ruth Bell, who was Head of Parks and Countryside. Just over a year ago, Finance Committee approved the granting of a lease of land at Millhouses Park for the Wacken Horses pub to use as an outdoor seating area with their takeaway sales kiosk. The following day, the pub operator went into administration and the same directors acquired the property and are operating the pub under a new company name. Since then, negotiations have been ongoing to finalise the lease arrangements. It is widely acknowledged that the pub industry continues to operate in a challenging economic environment with reduced profit margins due to increased costs coupled with a reduction in demand due to the cost of living crisis. The revised lease terms, which are commercially sensitive and covered in Part 2 of the report, reflect the fact that sales turnover from the outdoor seating area and kiosk has not reached the levels originally anticipated. The other point to note is that the new company has offered to discontinue the sale of takeaway ice creams from the kiosk, which reduces the impact of that competition on the ice cream operator and the financial implications of this are covered in Part 2 of the report. Otherwise, the principles of the proposal remain the same and officers recommend approval of the revised terms.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, councillor Phipps?
I've got a number of them. Should I do the ones not relating to the contract first and we'll come back to it? Yeah, cool. So on the proposal generally, so on the previous agreement, you've just said the terms kind of remain the same, other than the contractual bits we'll discuss in a bit. So what was referred to in the previous public pack was an agreement to purchase a piece of accessible play equipment for the park. I think that was possibly something that came back as something from the consultation and Green Ecclesall councillor Peter Gilbert raised it with me, that I think Friends of Millhouses Park were particularly interested in that. So given there's not been a chance for consultation again on this agreement, is that something we think the business are looking to stick to as something they said last time or not?
Would you mind if I answer that one and then you move on to your next question? Just because otherwise it could get a bit difficult. So in the previous report, there was reference to some consultation that had been done, but also some comms that had been put out there by the business quite a few years before the agreement was actually reached and that referenced the accessible play equipment. But the report that came here in August 2023 said at that point that the company had already said that they weren't going to be putting a piece of accessible play equipment in the park, so by the time it was agreed last time, that was already not part of the deal.
Okay, thank you. I read the papers this morning, I thought it said that they were included at that point, but thanks. Right, leaving the contract stuff to later. Or maybe come back, because I think most of mine are relating to the contracts.
That's fine, councillor Mohamed.
So I'll start off with, I may have some contract related questions for later, but I'll start off with questions actually that Mike from the Friends group actually wanted asked today, but due to technical issues and deadlines, they weren't able to be tabled. So I'll table these on behalf of the Friends group and so first question, question one. Can it be confirmed that the proposed lease is now to be True North Brewery Co. and not the KS Yearly FCB Limited Pension Fund as was proposed back in Feb, March, early this year? That's question one he's got. Question two, can it be confirmed that the rent due from the lease on the lease is signed, will be backdated to December 22 as it was proposed at the time? And third question, can it be confirmed that the first three years of rent once paid to Parks and Countryside Services will be ring fenced for the Millhouses Parks budget as promised at the time by Ruth Bell? I'll just pause all them three questions and you can pick and choose the bits that you are clearly able to answer in public and then we'll pick up some of the stuff afterwards. Kevin Martin's got some private questions I have as well, okay?
I'm certainly able to answer two of them. So the first question, yes, as per the report, the lease that's been proposed today is two and I'm going to read the report while I say it, because I always get the words the wrong way around otherwise, is True North Brew Company Limited. It is not that pension fund that was discussed in the previous meeting. And then question three, yes, the agreement that I made with the Friends of Millhouses Park will be honoured and I spoke to Pete's last week, just confirming that the first three years of rent that we receive from True North Brew will go directly into the park so that local residents can see a really clear impact of the green space being used as the outdoor trading area. I'm not sure whether question two, I'm not sure whether I can answer it publicly and the only reason I say that is because that information about the date of the lease is in the closed part two.
Let's leave it till part two then. Sorry Mike, we can't get the answer on that one, okay?
Thank you, so there isn't any further questions, so can we, oh sorry. Yeah, yeah, so that's what I mean, so I think we're going to halt now so that we can ask questions which are in the exempt part. So can I just ask members of the public to leave for now? Thank you. Thank you. Some really good questions there from colleagues. There isn't any further questions or comments regarding this item, the lease of land at Millhouses Park? So I do need to ask members if we are all fine in terms of recommendations for approval? Are they all agreed?
Yes. Sorry Chair, dissent.
Dissent, okay, so that's dissent from councillor Phipps. But otherwise, approval from everybody else. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, which is the Council Plan Outcomes Framework, Quarter One Baseline Report, and this is on page 39 of the Agenda Pack.
Thanks Chair. As background to this issue, in May 2024, we signed off our new Performance and Outcomes Framework. That's a companion to our council plan. It includes a wide range of metrics that match to the spirit and intent of each priority within the plan. A key tenet of that framework was to bring quarter reporting back to this committee and today we're presenting the first baseline report of those metrics I've just mentioned. This is the first report where we've been able to provide a full suite of the outcome metrics where they're available with Sheffield data included. The idea is that we use these to show measurable progress against the council plan and one of the recommendations today is that we set out this as a baseline so we can see our distance travelled in terms of meeting our ambitions within that council plan. So the baseline report is available within Appendix 1 of this document. It includes visualisations, i.e. graphs, for each measure that we've chosen within the outcomes framework and for each priority, it includes a summary of that information that includes how current the data is in terms of when it was last reported and more importantly, it includes comparator data, which comparator we've chosen and how we compare to other authorities. If you remember, that again was a key principle within the outcomes framework, that we wanted to show comparison with our peers. On that, where indicated, there's a number of measures that are called out as being office for local government measures. Since we wrote this paper in the intervening time, the Office for Local Government has confirmed that it's going to continue in its role in providing scrutiny to government and we're anticipating some new measures rather soon actually in that area. There's another reason for why some of those comparators are chosen, because in the main, the Office for Local Government choose, of course it is average or comparative comparators, which is generally one and the same. In terms of setting the scene for the future, this is very much a baseline report and going forward, we intend to include consistent targets across every measure in the framework. You will see that there are some already present, that's because they're already nationally agreed, or some committees such as Adults already have committee reporting where some of these measures have been brought up to outcome level, so we have targets to already track against. The premise is that we'll, next time we bring this report back to committee, we'll have consistent targets in the main across every one of those measures. And what we'll say, really, this baseline report sets really the tone for how we're going to report this in the future. This is a static report now, but the intention is still to make these more interactive, provide more comparators, more cuts and splits of this data as we mature in our performance framework. As I've said, targets will be a key factor in determining success, so when we see these reports again in the future, we'll expect to see a more, bigger focus on those issues that I would call as red, i.e. not meeting their targets, or possibly even amber, whether at risk of not being performant. And while today we've presented a very broad set of information, we're expecting the future to kind of focus on those issues, provide you with narrative, target deviation information and invite more scrutiny really in this committee's role in scrutinising other committees where they may want to pick on some performance issues. That really leads us into this proposal supporting recommendation too, that we can continue to receive these reports quarterly. We build on the performance information that we've got, we provide more narrative description around the interventions taken and the changes made. And then in line recommendation three, this outcomes framework report allows the committees to consider any other areas of scrutiny that we might want to kind of look into at intervening time and specific items of performance that we may want to bring forward in the future.
Thank you, James. Councillor Chapman.
Yes, thank you Chair. Yeah, just a couple of comments about this data that you've presented. I'm not quite sure whether you can do anything about it, but when you start reading them, some things just stand out. On page 50, family hubs, I can understand why referrals to family hubs would go down through Covid, but for them to continually go down is pretty poor form of performance. You'd expect people to be reported to family hubs more often now, that's on page 50. And page 51, pupil exclusions from higher ed and from different forms of education. The comparison for Sheffield with other cities is really poor, but the data you're showing is comparison against core cities, what are core cities? And it would be better if you were comparing against the highest and lowest, not just an average, because the average could be skewed by one town being really bad or being really good and it makes, you know, makes it a bit odd. And also, the number of first time entrants into youth justice systems probably runs along with pupil exclusions from education and that's why they're going into problems. And there again, Sheffield's figures are really high compared to anywhere else, so we'd like to look into that and find out what's happening.
Just come back on, first on the comparators. I think what we presented today is one view of it. Going forward, we can include any number of comparators in there as well. And I think if we think back to the, some of the mockups that we provided in the performance framework, definitely the intention is to show potentially individual cities as well so we can start to make that judgement. Again, on the youth justice and the connectivity between, I think that's a discussion we need to start to have in choosing the measures. And I think I did a piece on this in the framework when it was written, particularly on the children's measures, they're chosen for a reason because they aren't interconnected, exclusions potentially related to youth justice etcetera. So we need to, it's a really good point to bear those in mind and I imagine as well there'll be more measures that we want to add to this to kind of bridge the gaps in between, particularly around the journey of a child.
Yes, thank you. Yep, Meredith, did you want to come in?
Meredith Dixon, Meredith Dixon Teasdale, Director of Children's. I'm more than happy to work with the Education and Children and Families Committee to bring something back to committee. I mean, I think there is a, we do know that Sheffield has a higher level of exclusions, also a lower level of attendance at schools, it does relate to youth justice. We also, as part of the Youth Justice Board, are looking at how everything links together as well. Family hubs, I think again, it has been difficult getting parents back into family hubs after Covid, so whilst I agree with you, we shouldn't be seeing a continued decline, there has been that loss of a generation of parents who did know about them and then have, need to encourage them back into the area, but happy to bring a more comprehensive explanation back if that would be helpful to you.
Thank you, Meredith. Councillor Slater?
Hiya. Two questions. First one, I'll do the easy one first. One, have we got owners for each of these graphs in terms of who would we go to if we want to find out information on a particular area? And then the second one is, I like numbers, I like looking at these, but I am concerned about, I was able to think of just looking through this seven numbers that I would be interested in that aren't here. So will there be, I'm proposing that we have regular meetings to discuss the metrics of what we would want in the future and, yeah, so that would be something I think we need to have going forward.
Thank you for that. So to answer your first question, yes, there's definitely owners behind these, if you want us to include that on future reports in terms of providing that data, we can certainly do that and we work with that range of owners across the council to gather that information through. And then I think in terms of the choice of metrics, this is very much the first cut against the council plan. When I look at peers and councils held in high regard by the LGA, doing performance, it's a constant journey and particularly in their kind of formative years around their strategic plan, this additional metrics added, so I think that's really healthy. And in the performance framework, we encourage at least a minimum annual review. I think in this case it would be helpful to kind of review that quite regularly to make sure we're getting the correct amount of metrics, the correct, sorry, the correct metrics included. What I will add as well is that we're doing lots of work with the other committees in terms of producing a framework for that committee. It's built on these metrics, but it provides more detail within the golden thread. So using Meredith's area as an example, we've got here a small, relatively small number of metrics that represent the full gambit of children's services. In the work that we're doing with that committee, it will treble that amount of metrics available and the detail, so it provides more to the performance ecosystem of the council.
Thank you, councillor Slater.
Yeah, so, okay, agree with that idea, so is there a time already set to say that we'd have a meeting every quarter or whatever it is to start off with?
I think we could tear that offline, we've got December is the next time that we're due to report at this committee, so this certainly adds lots of opportunity to have that dialogue and continuous development of these tools.
Councillor Phipps.
Thank you Chair. Just one in particular that struck me, on the number of children aged 0 to 15 killed or seriously injured, road casualties for a year average, that's going up. As a committee, would we, how do people feel about putting a recommendation to transport, just saying this needs looking at? We should be aiming for zero really, we don't want any children killed or seriously injured in Sheffield through road casualties and we need to be looking at road safety as a priority. I know there's already white extremes going on in this, but seeing the figures in front of us, I think it'd be good to put a recommendation forward if people agree with that.
I have got a proposal that I'm going to bring later and that might fit, because that was one of the questions I actually asked at the pre-brief, wasn't it, about children and what I couldn't say, and it was specifically about the death of children on the roads, but what there was anything about was children, safeguarding children and designing a city where children feel safe. So that is something that I'd also want as part of the outcomes. So I think I am going to do a proposal at the end and the questions that we've got might link into what I'm going to say next. Councillor Lee.
So thank you, yeah. I'm just wanting to know, where will all this scrutiny take place? Will it be in a committee meeting? So we've got a whole range of markers here and indicators across the whole of the council, so will this committee scrutinise this in a committee meeting or in a briefing meeting prior to a committee meeting? Because there's a whole range of things, questions we would want to ask and there's not much narrative against any of these things. You know, so an example, you talked about children excluded from school and the low attendance, how is that going to affect the economy of the city in the future? We need to understand, you know, all those factors and I guess each committee will then be scrutinising its own indicators prior or in a committee meeting, because, you know, you want to ask some very difficult questions at times and there's time and place to ask those questions, so I'd be really interested. If we're going to do this properly, you know, we need to do it properly and have the time to do it.
Completely agree, it's about putting that wider performance system in place, so not just what we do here in committee, but the Performance and Delivery Board, that is going to scrutinise some of the measures that are not performing, provide that narrative and provide some assurance to this group as well. I think it's going to take time for that ecosystem to build and I think moving it to this committee gives it a bit more time as well in terms of using not just S and R for an annual review, but having quarter reviews that we weren't doing previously allows us to have more frequent views on this information.
And if it's helpful, it will also come to our committees, so that's the proposal and that I would be seeing with councillor Dale as the lead member of children's services, that there's some knowledge briefings where some of the conversation takes place in detail. It's also really important about looking at as a suite of performance measures, because the last thing you want to do is to drive one performance indicator, so for example, children looked after, it's really important indicator, but there's so much that contributes to that as well, so.
Thank you. I think councillor Fox and councillor Shabab Mohamed would remember the old performance scrutiny boards we had many, many years back. I used to be a cabinet advisor on performance many, many years ago, so I remember how it worked then and it was quite robust, I think, and we just need to ensure that we get that back within the framework we've got now, which is quite different.
Yeah, so I think within those development sessions would be relaxed here and hear your feedback. This is the first time we've reported on this, so we've got lots of scope really to expand the toolset in line with your recommendations.
Councillor Fox.
Thanks Chair, and just following on from councillor Lee in some respects, first of all, thanks for this. I think as elected members, once this went away from us, I think we kind of searched for this and certainly one of the fears was once we'd done away from the old system of working, scrutiny would kind of be diluted, so it's So it's nice to see these back. And I'm sure each member has their own individual set of figures that they would scrutinise more than others, not for the possibility. What I would like to see Chair, if I can, is that this is distributed around the LACs as well. Because realistically, when we're talking about communities, we're talking about young people, this all affects where we live, work and play in our communities. So it'd be good, I think, and I'm not suggesting every quarter please that, but I'm suggesting that at least one LAC meeting is actually dissolved to this so we can scrutinise in our own areas and maybe compare across the city in some respects of that. Because I think there is a big correlation between the figures in youth justice system and certainly the expulsions around the city. I think there's some team and ladling that we need to look into in some of that. And Meredith is quite right to raise that with the chair of that committee. But I certainly, as a member who doesn't sit on that committee, I'd certainly like to certainly in my area, be able to scrutinise some of these performances. And I understand this is our first stab at it and there are, you know, this will devolve, it's like a living document, I'm sure. You know, that this, you know, the transport system, I'd like to see that a bit more. Because if we are talking public transport and we are talking in certain areas, what I would imagine would be a more volatile point about their public transport than probably some others. So it's just a kind of recommendation Chair, first of all, and I'd just like to congratulate officers for bringing this through. It's, it's our first quote this and I'm, I'm really excited at where this may take us. I certainly haven't got the appetite that councillor Slater may have for figures. Pictures is more my kind of game, but anyway, I'll leave that with councillor Slater. My other request Chair is one that if this could be taken to groups, the political groups as well, to have a look at in some detail where we can kind of drill down on policymaking. Where that, because what this may reflect, and I'm sure it will, are different policies. Some that may be working, some that may want beefing up or whatever. And I think in a political forum, we could also have a look at that with a good conversation with officers. So it's a recommendation from this committee, I'd like to see A the LACs and B political groups, if I'm allowed to do that. Thanks Chair.
Yeah, I mean, if that's a proposal, if somebody wants to second that. Just on the point about LACs, I think governance committee are looking at the role of LACs. So I think it's probably worth feeding that in, into governance committee at this stage to consider how the performance regime is reported out to LACs and considered by LACs. I see a thumbs up from councillor Fox on that, so I'm assuming that's okay.
Yeah, it makes sense for us to go through governance because they are doing all this work around the LACs now anyway. But hopefully at some point we can report that back here. Okay, councillor Mohammed?
Sorry, I don't have the pages online. But it's about EPC ratings of C and above. Interesting to see the graphic, but clearly if you go further back, a couple of pages down, when you're looking at comparators, there isn't any comparators mentioned. Not available surely, what, for EPC ratings for other core cities, for example? Do one question. Secondly, what would be really helpful, going on, just building on what Terry said is, where are these unoccupied properties that probably need more work doing on them? We clearly got some work done on our rented sector. How much is that social housing, non-council, housing associations? How do we compare? So it's about drilling into what these, not just these three bits of data they presented to us, but actually getting behind it and whether it's through the LACs, it might be an interesting place to go. And then just a genuine question, youth services, youth work sessions, we don't have the data, sure, come on. We're into the second quarter now, not sure why we've not got that data. And similarly, it goes on to bus usage and stuff. Clearly some of that must exist, whether we hold it or the South Yorkshire Combined Authority. So there's bits of data Chair here missing that I hope that the next time we come, it's going to be much more complete and maybe taking on board how we compare with other places, even if it's not presented in a report, where we can find that information easily.
No, certainly, I'll note those and come back on them. I think next time we'll certainly have a more complete collection of information. I think under the EPCs, I need to check that, I think, because some of these are quite new measures, potentially nationally. So it may, may not be out yet as comparative data, but I'll take those away councillor and check.
Councillor Livry?
Thanks Chair and thanks for the report. There's a lot of hard work going into this, particularly in the way that it's been constructed and to put the measures together with certain key objectives. What strikes me is most of the data is 22, 23. There's some data back as much as five years. If you can't get it beyond five years, is it valid? Can we make use of it? Because if it's back to 2018 and we're now in 24, my question is, can we get that data up to date? That's the first point. The second point is we've got lots of data not available yet. So in terms of the development of this, when do we expect to get to a point where we've got all the data populated at this stage with what these data sets are? And when we get it as up to date as we can, what's the target on that?
Okay, so we tend for all the data that we hold as a council and have up to date to be in the next report. So there's been a conscious choice this time to look at things like particularly Comeris area again. We know we've got more up to date area on our, on our update data, sorry, I looked after children. And we'll bring that in and we'll show you where that with the comparators end, we can carry on. There is some data, just because of what it's reported, and particularly some of the Office for Local Government, where it is on a, on a further back timescale, there's quite a lag to it. I think in those cases, we'll just call it out because there's little we can do there. But where we've got control of it within the council, we'll report it up until the most, the most current validated information.
And as an example, so GCSE results, we will always, it will always be at this point, beginning to be an 18 month lag because the validation doesn't happen until January the year after. So there are reasons sometimes why it is, there is quite a lag to it. But we have live data that we're working on as well, which you can probably share in, you know, in a more confidential manner.
Yeah, and I think I'll say as well, the tools that we're developing, I think we've already said this is very much a starting point as it becomes moves from paper to interactive. Those things will become more available to you essentially between committees in terms of performance monitoring and yourself as members wanting to kind of look at that data and analyse it and hopefully as well, start to drill down as well. This is very much a very flat perspective cut of it. My, my vision for it is that things like ethnicity, other protected characteristics, geographies become part of that tool. So questions are answered by use of the tool, not by having to come back to a SAS for other data, but that will come over time.
Okay, I think what I was searching for was some feeling of, at the next report, will this be substantially done? Or is it going to take another three months beyond that?
So we're intending to bring the quarter two back reporting back in December, which will obviously update the data that's here, but also provide a red, amber or green rating, particularly against our targets, which will have a consistent view of it there as well. And for those that are failing, provide some narrative where there's not an issue. So we have asked today, I think a number, a number of councillors have asked about, is there a narrative for it? So those that are seen as amber, i.e. not quite close to the target, red, not meeting it, will have a narrative from the responsible owner, strategic, since you were strategic director, explaining why the position is as it is, what we're doing to solve it and in some cases where we've made good progress as well.
Thank you. Yeah, so one of the questions I had and I, it was just around enable everyone to feel valued and supported. There's nothing in there around our commitment with partners to become an anti-racist city. So, you know, it's, it's really good and thank you James, you know, a lot of work has gone into this. But clearly there are some gaps. And, you know, hearing the questions that were asked today and conversations I have had with elected members, I think finance members would like to be a little bit more involved in the indicators. So what I wanted to propose today is a task and finish group. So elected members, finance members here can help develop some of these indicators. So outcomes are clearly linked to the outcomes in the council plan. You know, measuring outcomes is so important, it's really, really important. And there is an appetite for members around the room today to be involved. So if I can propose a task and finish group, so, you know, so that we can spend maybe the next three months kind of looking at the indicators and the outcomes and feeding back into that so that they're very clearly linked, you know, with the performance outcomes framework. Would somebody like to second that, yeah?
Yeah, I'll second that, yeah.
That's fine, so if that's okay, we could have a few sessions really looking at, you know, this report and in particular the indicators, so where there are gaps. You know, we could have that conversation and that dialogue to see where we can insert some more indicators that would reflect on some of the outcomes that we'd like to see in the report. Is that, is that okay?
Really, really welcome that dialogue. And I think going back to kind of cases we've seen, that's a really healthy kind of relationship with members to kind of add those outcomes in as we go and kind of expand the measure set. What I will say on the Race Equality Commission measures, we're doing some work with our colleagues in Equalities and they are putting together a set of metrics now to support some of that work. What would imagine, and we could possibly pick up as part of that task and finish group, is that they all must represent measures from a director in and of themselves. So we could look at elevating some of those up to outcome level to fill those gaps.
And that's why I think a task and finish group was really important because, you know, where there is things missing, we know why, they're being developed in other areas. So I, I think there's definitely an appetite, this is an exciting piece of work. And it's a really important piece of work and we do want to, you know, kind of have some input in this. But thank you very much for bringing this today. And I think there'll be members here really keen to get involved in helping set some of the indicators for the, for the framework. All right, so there is recommendations for approval. Can I ask committee, are we all agreed? Yep? Thank you, thank you very much, thanks James. Moving on to item number 10, commissioning of merchant acquiring services. This is on page 93 of the Agenda Pack. Jane's going to be presenting, thank you Jane.
Thank you Chair, I'm Jane Willby, the Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. And I'll talk to you about the council's merchant acquirer services. So as a bit of background, the council received over 650,000 debit and credit card transactions last year, collecting almost 74 million. Volumes and values have increased significantly and whilst this is good in terms of collecting more money for the council, the cost of the service has also grown. The current service provider that we've got for our merchant acquirer services has been in place for many years and it means that we haven't tested whether transaction costs are still competitive. So we do have an opportunity to seek more competitive pricing as well as other contract improvements. So we are seeking approval to commission a new five-year contract based on current levels and estimated growth over the next five years. We anticipate this will be in the region of 4.1 million. So we want to seek a contract for better pricing and other contract improvements such as improvements to reporting and improve integration with our existing systems. Sorry. So the reason, reason for going to commission a new contract is for pricing, also to maintain security and compliance with payment card industry data security standards and GDPR regulations, improve service quality, reporting and to take advantage of technological advancements and to future-proof the service. So that's about all there is to say. So if there's anybody who's got any questions on that, happy to answer any.
Councillor Slater?
Hiya, so a couple of things. One, could we have a carbon reduction target added to the contract? So the, over the period of the contract, there is a reduction in carbon. The other one is, is this a per transaction cost? So is it work that it's five p per transaction or whatever? If so, can we again do a game share like I was talking about earlier, where if it increases, which I would expect it to, can we make sure we're paying a lower rate if it, if the amount we're spending increases? And can we, the other one is going back to again, what we had the example of earlier, can we make sure that we see it before the final offer?
Absolutely, I think we will take all that feedback on board and when we start with the procurement exercise and developing that specification and the evaluation criteria, then of course, those sort of things will be discussed and built into that.
Councillor Phipps?
Not a question, it's just a personal interest, just to be safe actually. I work for Access Group although for a different branch that, so I don't work on pay 360. And also this isn't tendering directly for pay 360 or anything, I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Thank you. No more, no more further questions or comments, that's fine. The recommendation does ask for approvals, are we all agreed? Yep, that's all agreed, thank you very much. Moving on to item 11, the capital approvals, month 4, 24, 25. And this is on page 107 of the Agenda Pack. The presenting officer is Damian.
Afternoon, thank you Chair. I'm Damian Rockinson, I'm the Finance Manager in the Capital Team, here to present the additions and variations proposed to the capital programme in the latest monitoring cycle. As usual, I'll just run through on the committee policy area. So starting with transport regeneration, climate change, there are proposed feasibility works to examine solutions to access issues faced by heavy goods vehicles accessing the nut wood trade in a state. So initially that's around 35k to start to scope those proposals and see what action will be possible. On the Rockingham Street bus works, there's been additional funding received from the Combined Authority, part of the works to improve public transport connectivity and pedestrian access across the, across the city centre. So this will involve new crossings at West Street and some bus priority works to link up the bus routes to the new interchange at the side of Pound's Park. The Upadon Valley flood scheme, stage one, is nearing completion. Previous approval we brought forward, we'd managed to reduce the budget slightly on that for around 200k. Those costs have just crept back up again, so we did keep an allocation of commuter infrastructure levy aside for the event of this and we're just playing this now back into the budget for that scheme. A couple of the other transforming cities fund transport schemes, so Nether Edge Wedge and the Darnall Attercliffe City Centre link. These schemes are still really now approaching their final stages of development and we're into putting the final business cases to the Combined Authority to secure the funding to actually get on the ground and deliver these schemes. But to get to that point, we just need to cash flow some, some additional development spend, largely around much more intrusive surveys and design work's being done. Partly that's because of experience of the Housing Zone North scheme that's on site, which has discovered problems with drainage, so we're just trying to cover those bases off. And also the city regions method of allocating funding, it's changed slightly and they just asked for a little bit more cost certainty at this stage before we put that final business case in. So this additional design and development work just brings us to that stage so that we can get those business cases submitted. The Brownfield site development, so we've got a revolving fund of capital receipts that have been put aside to acquire strategic Brownfield sites, to develop them and get them ready for housing development. Now, part of that is some works that are going to be done at Cornish Works, some remedial works that need to be done. We've secured some additional funding from Historic England to support that work. So we just want to increase the budget by the value of that funding. Under housing, we're doing some feasibility works again regarding a retaining wall around Orchard Lane that's collapsing. So we need to establish what the solution's going to, engineering solution's going to be for that. And then we'll bring forward a business case to, to complete those reinstating works. We're re-profiling a budget of fire suppression works. So we've got an allocation put aside for misting solutions that are delivered to vulnerable people who are not able to evacuate home quickly. It's a demand It's a demand-led scheme, so it's brought in where it's required and it's been clear that it's not all going to be spent this year, so we're just moving that out. So we've got a more realistic budget profile of that. The ongoing electrical upgrade programme to council housing has had initial budget and it's really, the costs have been higher per property than were initially forecast. So they're coming at around 1.6k per property rather than what was originally expected at 1.1. This has been due to some works, you know, more work's been needed than required and they've been doing, I think, a lot of additional work in voids where void properties which have needed more upgrading. So as a result, they're going to deliver fewer outputs, so not the 17,000 that they were expecting, it's going to be close to 13. And we're also accelerating that budget so that spend's going out the door quicker. So it's not possible to extend the contract to the value that it would need to be, we need to go out to retender for the remainder of those. So this is just really saying, this budget's not increasing, we're just going to deliver fewer properties with it and we'll need to get back out to tender to pick up the remainder. That moves on to the council housing new build schemes that are coming forward. So this is the new build stock increase programme's restarting really after a pause and the first couple of sites coming forward now. So we've got the general needs housing at Newstead, so this is going to be 77 new housing units, a mixture of family houses and some apartments. The costing total of this will be 24.1 million when we include remediation, remediation works had to be done on that site beforehand and increased costs as well. There's been new building regulations come forward, so there have been additional costs on that site. Costs of building are significantly in excess of what those properties will be actually worth when it's completed. However, because we're using our right to buy receipts, so it means that we're, our borrowing risk, we're not, we're not exposed on the borrowing if we were to lose those properties to right to buy. And also the 15-year cost floor gives us some protection. And again, we're aware that the current government is reviewing right to buy regulations, so there are a number of mitigating factors around that. It's a similar position at Bowlhill View where we're delivering 36 one-bed flats on a site. Again, it had previously been paused and the total cost of that's going to be around 8.4 million. Again, there's a risk at, at the end of the 15 years, if we lost all, you know, if we lost all the flats on the maximum discount, there would be some risk, but there are so many variables involved around what house price inflation will be, what cost price inflation is going to be, and again, what the current government choose to do on right to buy, that this investment is just needed in these areas to provide that social housing and it just, it's just the investment the public sector's having to make effectively to provide affordable housing where it's required and where it wouldn't be delivered by the private sector. We are also acquiring 47 new houses from Sheffield Housing Company, Corker Bottoms. So we previously negotiated a price separately with the housing company. However, legal issues as we came to complete, it was identified that they'd had some funding from Homes England who could have a say over what the price that the properties would sell for would be and it had to be an open, a recent open market valuation and not a negotiated price. So that's taking place. We need to add in an additional million pounds, take it about to 11.2 to acquire those properties. But in this case, as we are, we're acquiring these properties at open market value, so that significantly de-risks it in terms of right to buy. We're not, we're not borrowing more than these properties are worth because we're only paying what they're valued at. So that one's brought forward for that reason. I think in, under education, children and families, we're having to add a further 100k into our primary maintenance emergency works pot. It's been an ongoing issue in terms of the school estate, we know that it's, it's, it's quite a backlog and we don't get the funding that's required really from central government to meet that backlog. So we're seeing more and more, we're having to react quickly. So we're topping up this emergency pot, so I think it'll come to around 400k this year that we'll, we'll have available to access where we need to get in quickly and we can't come through a full planning approvals process for those. And finally, we've got an offer of grant funding from the local authority housing fund, so this is round three of this funding. You might remember the previous two. It's aimed at those acquiring new properties into the housing stock specifically to support Afghan and Ukrainian refugees, but then afterwards those properties can continue into the general needs housing stock. And I think that's everything.
Thank you, Damian. Councillor Slater?
Hiya. I've got two questions, one on the flood, Don Valley flood phase, one on page 155. What costs have increased? You said you'd put ring fence some spend before, so I guess that meant you knew, guessed it was going to happen. And then the other one on page 121 about the fire suppression service, this is more to do with our performance hat rather than our finance one. Can we have some metrics built so that we can monitor that and make sure it's looking at its new timeframe that's going to happen?
Just another fire suppression one. There's been a number of issues around that Upper Don side. Some of them have been around access to land from the, from landowners, which is delayed works and that's, that's largely where the majority of that's come from, it's been trying to get access to some of that land. As I understand it from project management, I can get some more detail from it, but that's been a key thing that's, that's had that project slipping.
Is that way, is it?
Yeah, it will be that and, and actually sometimes granting access to the land in order to undertake the work and while ever that's been delayed, you know, contractors are sat with prelims still, so. But I can get further detail, I can get a detailed report on it.
Councillor Mohammed?
Couple of questions. Damian, both on the Darnall Attcliff and Nether Edge, but particularly in Darnall Attcliff and page 116, everyone. It's this increase of a million pounds and you said the budget, the increased budget will also be used to cover relevant officer time and relevant fees. Is there any chance you've been able to give us a breakdown of how much of that million pounds is in each of those categories? How much is going to be fees and how much is it officer time?
Yeah, certainly.
I suspect it'll be both for Nether Edge and for Darnall Attcliff, yeah?
That feels good, I know.
Okay, and the, the next one is around the housing one, Newstead's, here we go, general need. I've just Googled how much these houses cost and I know you covered it in your thing, but it's over 100,000 pounds each. So am I right in assuming we are going to get the top energy ratings and everything if these houses are coming in over 100,000 pounds, more than the market value? And the other issue is how's this stack up, particularly Newstead around HRA and right to buy?
Yeah, so I did try and cover that a little bit in, in the wording, so. Yeah, I'll be able to get your detail on the spec of the houses, that won't be, that won't be an issue. Yes, we've, you know, our HRA does need an injection of new stock in order to be able to, because while ever the, the stock is leaking out, that's rent that's not being received to, you know, continue with the investment in the existing stock. But yeah, so we did as much modelling as we could, like I said, around what could happen if we lost these properties and what's the, what's the major exposure we've got? And that's the reason we've, we've got that, that split of borrowing and right to buy receipts. So I work with the, obviously with my colleague in HRA accounting and we look at this together and it's, you know, what, how many properties do we need to come in? I think it's properties viable within this state they've got to manage. And yes, there is, there is a risk on, I think it's on Bowlhill, that's like in 15 years, there might be 600 grand. But we're, we're in a position where, like I said, these are our sites that we need to develop and press on with and, and try and, we're just trying to deliver at pace initially with what we've got. And it's, that was considered, you know, that's an acceptable level of risk on these. But yeah, it's not, it's not ideal and like I say, it's, it's where the public sector is basically stepping in with private sector won't to deliver affordable housing on sites that might have been developed, like particularly the Newstead one where the remediation work that we've had to do and the stabilisation works have been quite substantial, but they're the sites that the HRA have got to work with. But yeah, we've, we've looked into that and yeah, it's, yeah, it's not ideal and it's, like I say, an investor, a normal private housing developer wouldn't necessarily work on these sites, so.
Just, just on the issues around right to buy, Chair, I think now that we've got a newer government, we might be worth at some point this council making our position very clear where we are standing on right to buy in terms of being able to have the option of ending it if we want to, but maybe a conversation for another day.
Just, I know there was a meeting at Southwark Council that they chaired and we have reps that went down there and we're, I think, making, making Sheffield's position as part of that.
It's just making our HRA very difficult to manage otherwise.
Councillor Phipps?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, totally agree. Let's get rid of right to buy. On the electrical upgrade programme, there was recently a paper in S and R, wasn't there, about 19 million on electrical testing, I think for housing is? Yeah, is, is this, oh, it's coming this week, right. So how do these two sit together? Is this covering that or are these in addition?
So as I was saying, this is, so we're coming towards the, well, we're in the middle of this phase two of this electrical programme, so there's the upgrade works and there's the, there's the testing works. And these are largely the upgrade, these will be the upgrades that where they've been, they're going to need to do specifics where we'll be upgrading and if they identify additional works, they'll take place as well. I've not got the full spec of what they're expecting to deliver in these, but I think it's, it's a basic, a basic upgrade that's been done and then if there are additional works required. So we are expecting a new contract to come forward to deliver the next stage of this.
All right, okay. That kind of answers another one of my questions because I was wondering, it does seem expensive for testing, but if, because it does mention testing works in it, but this is actually the upgrades works taking place. Okay. That's something, that's great. On Newstead general needs then, I was going to ask some similar questions to Councillor Mohammed. Yeah, I mean, at face value, 24 million pounds for 77 units does seem quite steep, but I mean, it is good to see new council housing being built. It's something that we need in Sheffield and across the country. So yeah, thanks for clarifying around the risks a little bit. What, what we weren't so sure about is, I think we had kickback on other developments like Gleedless Valley, saying not sure this is viable to build our own council housing there and such numbers because what about the risk from sale and stuff? But we're saying it's okay for Newstead. Are we kind of changing position now as time goes on and maybe that's something we can revisit when we're looking at other sites like Gleedless Valley?
After all, say I just see the schemes that are brought forward individually, in terms of it being the policy around which sites are brought forward and when, that's not something I'm close to. Like I say, I'll assess schemes and help assess schemes as they come forward, but in terms of the overall policy direction in terms of Gleedless Valley, I think that's something that probably needs to be taken up with the, the housing service on that. Yeah, I've not, I'm not part of all those discussions.
Councillor Everie?
Thanks, Chair. A question and a comment. The electrical upgrade, where you're going to have to retender for the remaining ones to be done, is that going to go ahead straight away or is it going to follow on the current project?
I'll have to come back to on that one and check with the service where, where they are in terms of their time scales on specking it and getting it back out to tender. So I'll, I'll check for that.
Thank you. The other comment, the comment was again on right to buy. We're in the, what I would call a ludicrous situation where the cost of construction and the 15-year rule means that properties like two-bed bungalows on Buchanan Green have been let at 243 pounds a week. That's one pensioner's pension gone and clearly we're going nowhere with this and it needs a major, major overhaul. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fox.
Thanks, Chair. First of all, praise for the extra investment in Corker Bottoms, we do welcome that, but obviously there's an increase. But what is seems to be a worrying trend at the moment, Chair, is that we're coming more and more for extra money because of the increasing charges to build houses etcetera. Is it within this committee's remit? And I'd like to know whether we could have Sheffield Housing Company, as we now go talking at our capital budget and we are looking at changing to our priority-based budgeting in 25, 26, is it within this committee's remit to get Sheffield Housing Company to come and talk to us about how they foresee the market going further down the line? If we are being asked in piecemeal each time to put a million in here, two million in here, 24, it seems that we are making decisions then more in a piecemeal way rather than an holistic view of, of a, a more collective view. And I'm looking more finance, I get housing would have a different argument about, about allocations etcetera, but certainly from a finance point of view, keep going towards in a piecemeal way. And bearing in mind that Sheffield Housing Company is building on places where other developers would not be, so I, you know, I understand the, the debates about that. But it would be good to see a, a, get a five-year field for down the line because every project we seem to be involved in at the moment through this finance, take Fargate, take, take Sheffield Housing Company, take, as Councillor Everie said about, you know, about rents and that, it would be good to get a management company that's a partner organisation out to see what their forecast is going, going down the line. And I'd just ask that the finance committee could have that conversation, Chair.
Sorry, that's a conversation about how the housing companies do?
Sorry, if I didn't make that quite clear. To bring the housing, not bring, that sounds a bit overdragging, but to invite them to come and speak to the committee about how they see the next five years of building etcetera, because constantly coming here asking for a million pound year or 24, it'd be good for the finance committee at least to have a view of what the capital spend is going down or as we move to priority-based budgeting as well. So I just ask whether it's within our remit. If it's not, then I can't propose it. If it is, I would propose through you, Chair, that we'd ask the housing company to come and talk to us, bearing in mind that they are building in various parts of the city.
I think that probably is something that you might want to look at as part of the capital overview about the strategy for the housing company going forward and it, and how it's delivering its viability. I mean, that is a live discussion at the moment, so let me think on how we bring something about that, but I think that probably is something that we might be able to bring to this committee.
I think, I hope so, we can, Councillor Fox, because we are looking at the overspend here, aren't we? Yeah, so it makes sense, especially under the capitals strategy. But we'll get back to you in regard to that. I think David will have a conversation. Philip, Councillor Everie?
Thanks, Chair. On the back of what Councillor Fox says, I'm getting more and more concerned that despite putting costs together and building in contingencies, things still seem to come back two years down the line for more money. So either the contingency process isn't working or we're not setting a mechanism in place that's realistic in terms of what is action and the cost to deliver. And I think this is the whole thing they need to look at over a gorgeous house and I think we need to do some more work there.
Yeah. Okay, so is there any further comments or questions now? This report also contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yeah, thank you very much for your attendance today. That's fine, Damian, thank you for the report. The next meeting will be on the 21st of October at 2pm. Thank you, everyone.